Great, so I'm gonna talk about the Latinx community outreach, the alternate care site and how that's going, the homeless response, state modeling information, the local latest data and community health data as well, and our reopening timeline, so that it's very clear what approach we're gonna take over the next week or so. So as you all know, and we've been discussing this, it's very sad, the disparity that we're seeing, it's very marked actually, and actually getting more apparent in terms of disparities of the COVID-19 impact on the Latinx community. The disproportionate rates are actually increasing, as I'll show you, partly because of our targeted efforts to address them. And of course, now there's multifactorial reasons why this is happening that we can go into. There's inequities, more vulnerability, less access to appropriate care and services, being part of the essential workforce, and less likely to be able to implement mitigation strategies. And simply, as we know with COVID, once it's in a particular community, it actually exponentially increases because it's so transmissible from person to person, either in the airborne route or direct contact. So our disproportionate number of cases is increasing. As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, I presented that it was 55%. Now 75% of our cases are occurring in Latinx, and they represent 27% of the population, whereas 20% of cases are now occurring in the white, non-Hispanic self-described population, whereas they make up 65%. There isn't a big difference between Asian Pacific Islander and other from a couple of weeks ago. This disparity is increasing, and the case rate is probably somewhere around nine times or 10 times that of white, non-Hispanic, again, because of our concerted efforts to find cases in this community, either through contact tracing or through intensive work site investigations. And of course, the more cases you have in a certain community, the more cases you get. So as compared to non-Latinx cases, Latinx cases are younger, 86% are under 50, because that's the age group that is working in the essential work sites. And we are seeing a lot of transmission now in those work sites, as we presented before. And again, a lot of this is due to the fact that we are doing investigations and rapidly finding people who have COVID, getting them out of the community and isolated, quarantining contacts. Again, these cases are more often due to the close contact transmission. There is a high percentage that have no symptoms, about, I think it's about 20 to 30%, because again, we're testing all contacts, whether they have symptoms or not. And they're less likely to have an underlying condition or be hospitalized, simply because the cases are occurring in the younger population of 0 to 49-year-olds. And the kids are extremely disproportionately affected because they're part of the big households where transmission is occurring. You look at the employment sectors of COVID-19 cases by race and ethnicity, you can see that COVID-19 cases are occurring disproportionately in the unemployed, in manufacturing, agricultural and farm work, construction and related trades, in cleaning, janitorial, environmental services, sanitation, public works, and landscaping, outdoor maintenance, and food and beverage production. Not happening as much in public safety, professional managerial, in those people who are actually shelter, homemaker, not working, other categories, healthcare. And about the same in service and sale. Keep in mind, however, workplace transmission now accounts for less than 10%. Last week, it was less than 5%. So this workplace transmission has increased by 5% in the last week, again, because of the large work site investigations that are leading to a lot of secondary cases. Where an individual works is not necessarily where it's transmitted, because 90% of transmission is still occurring outside of the workplace. So why this inequity? Well, because we have institutionalized inequities and racism, essential workers that are Latinx, and the housing structure with people living in large family groups and intermingling quite a bit within close crowded conditions. You know, we have, as I've mentioned, we've had outbreaks amongst vineyard workers, amongst agricultural and farm workers, against people in, among people in manufacturing plants. And those are also places where a lot of people are working together and commuting to work together. What have we done? We've provided this detailed data tracking. The dashboard is presenting very specific information on Latinx communities. Our data in that group that I just presented. The Latinx Health Work Group has been convened. We're focused, doing focused mobile pop-up testing in Latinx communities and workplaces. We are now providing messaging and outreach, communication in multi-language format. And we are disseminating very key information in Spanish-language media outlets. I was able to do an interview with one of them last week. I think it was very successful in reaching this group and getting out the key messages about how to protect oneself, about facial coverings, about all the mitigation measures that we've been talking about. And we are hiring bilingual, bicultural staff to support the response. Contact tracers, nursing staff, and intake workers have been hired. Culturally appropriate case managers have been hired. We're having weekly meetings with employers and leaders in the agricultural community to address this situation. And we will continue to build overarching strategies to address all aspects of COVID response for the Latinx community. That would include testing, mitigation, communication, care, getting our messages out. Operations Center Equity Officer will be assigned specifically for Latinx. This is happening, prioritizing the bilingual, bicultural staff, sorry, and hiring, strengthening our partnerships, that is continuing to strengthen partnerships with Latinx and Latinx-serving groups, developing an outreach plan to improve awareness in the community, again, through all of our messaging and media communications, as well as social media communications, and then prepare for a future surge if that were to occur. So that's the update on the alternate care site. The alternate care site has been busy housing those people with COVID and those people suspected of having COVID. So far, 105 individuals have been served, 13 are currently housed at the ACS. At any given time, we have different numbers of people housed in Sonoma State University, the alternate care site. We've had a large percentage, three-quarters of people at the ACS have been in the Latinx community, reflecting, of course, the proportion of Latinx that are also impacted by the virus. This is just exactly what we're seeing in terms of the breakdown. 20% in white, non-Hispanic, and then you can see the other percentages. Again, our people in the ACS are largely from our urban centers. Sorry. But you can see that all of the counties are to some extent represented in the ACS. It's been really the 18 to 49-year-old age group that's been in the ACS, because that's also where our cases are occurring. More male than female by two-thirds to one-third. And the reason for being in the ACS has been largely because they're awaiting test results, positive test results. And we'll continue to use the ACS as much as we can, again, to try to get people who have COVID or who are highly likely to have COVID out of the community and out of their households, so that we don't get as much transmission of COVID in the community and in households. Non-congregate housing setting for the homeless has also been really busy with 157 persons being served. And this would include Sonoma State, the Fairgrounds and Trailers, and Astro Hotel. 75 of these persons are chronically homeless. And you can see what the average participation day length has been for people. And in terms of numbers of individuals per age group, it has been the older population, 45 to 61, and over 62 years of age, just reflecting the homeless population again, or unstably housed population. Been predominantly, well, slightly more male than female. You can see what the race ethnicity is. Again, white, non-Hispanic persons are then overrepresented in terms of the non-congregate setting for the homeless. So you can see that we have outreach for the homeless specifically. And the target for this program is homeless person 65 years of age or older, and those under 65 with serious underlying health conditions for COVID-19. And you can see that it's been quite successful at outreach. It was launched May 14, 2020, 138 COVID-vulnerable persons have been sheltered, 92 individuals' needs assessed for safety net services and housing, and 92 access enrolled, 80 vouchers for the COVID-19 homeless have been provided. So that is pretty much our update on the homeless. I'm gonna move now to the modeling updates. The state has recently, as of the last two days, put out new modeling updates. And I want to quickly go over the highlights, so you get an idea of what, where we stand with modeling and what the modeling predicts moving forward. So the highlights of the modeling are that most of the models, and now there's many models, not just our own Sonoma County model, which aligns with all the others, but probably about 10 other models. And the state is looking closely at about four or five of these, including a Hopkins model, some model out of Stanford, et cetera. And of course, we have the London School model. So most models predict a second peak of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths in the fall. The size and timing of the peak depends entirely on the mitigation strategies in place, and of course, individual behavior, who adheres to mitigation strategies, effectiveness of facial coverings and general hygiene and social or physical distancing. Surveillance testing will increase the accuracy of modeling, reduces the error bars on nowcasting. Nowcasting is what's happening right now. Forecasting is what's happening in the future. With more data, we are constantly improving the modeling platforms. Initially, our models far underestimated the effect of shelter in place and how effective it would be. Of course, models initially are always based on assumptions, because you don't have real data. Now, actually, we have a good three, four months of data. So these models are gonna be improving as we move forward in accuracy of short and long-term predictions. And the data indicate that the actions of the individual residents of California across the state, guided by the stay-at-home order, really flatten the curve over time. And again, it remains to be seen, as we move away from shelter-in-place or stay-at-home orders, how mitigation measures that we put into place are effective in continuing to reduce cases and flatten the curve. We don't know. And that's gonna be one of the big variables in modeling moving forward. Again, I think some of you have seen this graph, where the, we're looking again at surge capacity here. Hospitalizations on the y-axis, and we're seeing the time over the last four months on the x-axis. And we're looking at the impact of our shelter-in-place essentially. Without intervention would be the hash line here, where the models accurately predicted that we have very, very steep increase in hospitalizations by April, with a huge surge predicted for May without intervention. With intervention, however, this is what we've actually were seeing over time. And this is our actual hospitalizations, which are mirroring the modeling with interventions. And this was our surge capacity. We're well below our surge capacity in California, again, thanks to all of our shelter-in-place efforts. Otherwise, we would have, I think, seen a much, much more dire picture. So again, looking at the key takeaways, the figure showed that the size and timing of the worst-case scenario, an uncontrolled peak that could happen if no actions were taken, didn't happen. And this allowed us to take the strong actions that we did to move forward. So then, sorry, let me go back to the key modeling results. Nowcasting. Now, this is looking at two different counties and how things went in these counties in terms of hospitalizations with what happened. So we have Santa Clara County that was very, very, I guess, in the forefront in terms of shelter in place. In other words, they jumped on things right at the time that we did and put into place shelter in place. So what we have here on the y-axis, not to get too into the details, our effective is again, that reproductive number. How many secondary cases arrive? So in this case, 1.5 means for every one person that has one and a half people would get infected. Whereas one means that for every one person, only one other person could, would get infected. If we're below this number of one, we're doing really well. If we're above, then of course, we have more and more cases. Santa Clara, again, had a totally different approach from Orange County. In Santa Clara, shelter in place was put into place and kept in place and slowly loosened over May. And they still have most of the shelter-in-place orders in place. And you can see that by putting that shelter-in-place in place, they radically decreased the R-not and significantly decreased their hospitalizations. So that now, their hospitalizations are probably one-fifth of what they were at the peak of their outbreak. Now that shelter-in-place is stopping, in other words, they're starting to relax, as all counties are in California. We are actually ahead of Santa Clara at this point in terms of opening. They're seeing an increase in R-not again. They've just hit over one. And this hospitalization rate follows that, because as you know, there's a lag. When we start taking off restrictions, we start first, the R-not, or the how many people get infected from every case increases. This takes probably a month to actually show increased hospitalizations. So anyways, Orange County, I'm sorry, Orange County never really implemented full shelter-in-place, was unable to implement facial coverings, and had a real challenge early on, as many of you know from our news reports and just data from Orange County. So they were actually unable to decrease the R-not significantly and always remained over one in terms of the number of secondary infections. I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure they were trying to do a very intense contact investigation. I really think it was more the keeping people at home, facial coverings, and the other mitigation measures that they had a really hard time controlling. And as a result, their hospitalizations have increased and are continuing to increase at this point. And we don't know where this is gonna go, because their R-effective or R-not is still above one. So this just gives you two different models of state, not models, actual scenarios that the state has seen in two different counties that radically differently responded to the outbreak or the pandemic. Where are we as of a few days ago in terms of our effective reproductive number? This is R-not. And R-not, again, is one. This is one, where one person infects one other person. We're number three in the state for transmission. And again, this is being driven by our transmission in the Latinx. You can see Marin's not far behind us, because Marin has the exact same 70% of cases occurring in Latinx populations. We are just slightly behind King and Imperial County. As you know, Imperial County is having a huge surge at this time. And in fact, the call for other California hospitals to, sorry, other California hospitals to take ICU patients from Imperial County was put out yesterday. Imperial County now is expecting to transfer 10 ICU-level care patients out of their county to other California hospitals all over the state, starting yesterday, and is expected to transfer 10 people a day until the end of June, because that's the situation they're in, in terms of their surge. And we can look at Imperial and why that happened, but we really don't have time to discuss. I'm happy to have questions about that. They really handled the pandemic quite differently, because they never really had a good shelter-in-place in place. Anyways, there's reasons for why Sonoma is number three on this, mainly because of huge amounts of transmission in the Latinx community, in households, that shifted, as I said two weeks ago, to workplaces, which is why we put a hold on our opening of shelter-in-place, because of this R-not and because of the number of cases we were seeing. So opening too quickly may cause this R-not to tip back into the growth phase, greater than one, and cause a surge in infections and deaths. So there'll be at least a two-week lag before we can see the impact of increases in transmissions anywhere. And because of that lag between infection, symptoms, and testing of at least two weeks, we won't be able to really determine what's happening. And that's why we, that two weeks is a good metric for reopening policies. As I've always said, though, two weeks is probably not enough. It's probably more than like a month, maybe even a month and a half, before we really see the impact of any opening. But this is a red flag for us. We have reasons for it. But yeah, we're third in the state right now in terms of our R-not. Statewide hospitalizations are expected to continue at current levels. Short-term forecasts vary, but on average, the dark blue line. Hospitalizations should stay same over the next four weeks. Again, we'll see this impact in increase in hospitalizations more than four weeks out as an impact of everything that we do. And of course, specific counties may react completely different. Again, this is hospitalizations, and this is over the course of the months. Okay, so lastly, the forecast, that was a nowcast. Now the forecast for the rest of 2020. Most models agree that a second peak will occur, and it's probably gonna be, to some extent, county-specific, and it'll depend on what we do. We've been very successful in avoiding hospitalizations and deaths in our county compared to other counties, probably because of our approach. Here we have three models. Here is the Johns Hopkins model, the RAND model, the COVID Act Now model. And again, looking, these models show additional peaks in cases, hospitalizations, and deaths that will occur. Probably, we're looking at August, September, based on these models. This is because we're opening. The shelter-in-place is, you know, being peeled off. And soon, we won't be staying at home. We'll be going out with mitigation measures. So the models show the timing and the magnitude of the peak, strongly dependent, however, on the strength of our non-pharmaceutical interventions. That's what NPI is. What are non-pharmaceutical interventions? Facial coverings, social distancing, general hygiene, and employee screening to ensure that we're getting sick people out of our workplaces and tested. And testing, that's another huge non-pharmaceutical intervention. Contact tracing, finding cases, isolating them, quarantining contacts. These are all NPIs. So there'll be a weekly tracking of all these models by the state. A cautious approach to loosening the restrictions can avert a substantial number of hospitalizations and deaths. A moderate strategy of non-pharmaceutical interventions can save over 50,000 lives by Labor Day as compared to implementing weak non-pharmaceutical intervention. So this is a good pitch for us to continue what we're doing with facial coverings and all of our other non-pharmaceutical interventions. What are our key takeaways from the models? Most models predict a second peak of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths in the fall. The size and timing of that peak depends on having mitigation strategies in place during our phased reopening. The spread of COVID-19 can be tracked in real time using nowcasting of the effective reproductive number, that's the R-not. And currently, the spread of COVID-19 persists when the R-effective is about one for California. And we're above one at this time, as you can see. But that will fluctuate as we move forward. With increased opening of data at the country level, we expect, I'm sorry, county level, we expect improved forecasting. Surveillance testing will increase the accuracy of our modeling, reduces the error bars on the nowcasting. So now I'm gonna move to our Sonoma County case update. We've been adding somewhere between 17 or 18 cases over the past week. We have 671 cases now. Last week, when we talked, I think we had a little under 600. Active cases, 297, recovered, 370, deaths, we still have four. We've done a lot of testing, about 32,000 tests. What are our state criteria for our reopening? We, our average number of tests per day per 100,000 population is now less than 150 per 100,000. We have the capacity to test more, but the actual testing is less, partially because people aren't coming in for testing as they were in the past weeks at OptumServe. And so we need to encourage people as much as possible to go get tested. I believe OptumServe has probably provided about 20,000 tests, 15,000 to 20,000 tests. But we do have 500,000 population. And so a lot more people could get tested if they wanted through OptumServe sites at Santa Rosa and Petaluma. And I highly encourage that people go out and get tested. Our case per 100,000 has dropped. It's been fluctuating between about 30 to 40. And right now, we're at 31 per 100,000. This depends on a lot of things, the number of tests performed, as well as the, you know, the populations being tested, whether we're testing contacts or Latinx or the general public through OptumServe. Positivity rate remains low, because we're doing a lot of testing, and a lot of testing of people who aren't high-risk, just asymptomatic people in the county. Hospitalizations, we did have 18% change in the three-day average hospitalization, which is above the 10% threshold set by the state. But because our hospitalization numbers are low, this may not be the most accurate thing to look at. I prefer to look at the case rate per 100,000. The percentage of ICU beds currently available is also a bit of a red flag at this time, because we're now have more than 20%, well, only 22.4% available. And our ventilator status is fine. The state criteria indicating elevated case transmission really is the 30.8 or 31 cases per 100,000. But we've held steady, decreased in this over the past last week, since I thought we should have a halt in opening. So we're in a good place to move forward more towards opening more sectors now, given that this is held steady. If anything, it's dropped some. We're, again, as far as the hospitalization criteria, we don't have 20 hospitalizations on any single day. So we have met the stability of hospitalization criteria in that metric. We have the average change in number of confirmed COVID patients currently hospitalized has shown a 67% increase. But again, because our numbers are low, this isn't as good of a criteria for us to follow. But it's important to follow. It's just that I wouldn't use this to, alone, to interpret anything about reopening at this point. What are the characteristics of our patients ever hospitalized? You can see that about 15 of the hospitalized patients, 36% have ever been in ICU. It's split in the age categories between 18 to 49, 50 to 54, and over 65 in terms of ever hospitalized. And the total number of hospitalizations, still, it looks like it's 42. And we have no hospitalizations in children under age 18. Male, female breakdown is about even, given the small numbers. I would say it's about even. Majority have recovered, but we still have about 15 that are active and had the four deaths, all of which were hospitalized. As far as underlying conditions, you can see about a quarter had no underlying conditions, and 40% had diabetes, about 27% cardiovascular disease, 17% chronic lung disease, 17% hypertension, and 17% other. So as far as the state criteria indicating limited hospital capacity, we're doing okay. We are close to the indicator for the availability of ICU beds. But we could provide more ICU beds quickly with surge capacity if needed. Our ventilators are available, and we have personal protective equipment. Our testing capacity has always been 800, 900 tests per day in the last, I would say, month or so since OptumServe started. But our average daily testing volume is still 566 tests per day, partially because on the weekends, we don't test as much. Some days, we had a day where the laboratory was down, and that would be equal, why we had such low tests performed on a single day, because the laboratory was shut down due to a connectivity issue. But we have the capacity to test, and we need to encourage people in Sonoma County to go get tested. We still have lots of people who haven't been tested, the majority. So our approach now to field surveillance testing has been to daily coordination or view of data to set testing priority for our testing in workplaces, residential settings, community-based testing. We are prioritizing contact cases, that is, contacts-to-cases, asymptomatic and symptomatic. The Latinx community with pop-up and high-risk work site testing, vulnerable populations. And I will say, as of the past week, we've had, we've been very careful with these populations, but now we have many cases in employee We've been very careful with these populations, but now we have many cases in employees and. And several cases in residential care facilities. So this is increasing and it's of concern. We have. More cases and we're now doing contact investigations in residential care facilities and skilled nursing facilities. We also are prioritizing asymptomatic and symptomatic healthcare workers, first responders, community members that are symptomatic in this order of priority. And the vulnerable populations. Many of the cases that we've found are from our surveillance testing. You can see we've done. A lot of tests in contacts, Latinx, the Shanae Drive Thru, Optum Serve, Petaluma and Optum Serve, Santa Rosa. In this high risk, these groups that are higher risk. And you can see the percentage positivity that test positivity that the state talks about under eight percent. We are under eight percent overall, two percent. But the percentage popular positivity in contacts that are high risk is close to eighteen percent. But that's where we, the money is in terms of cases. So we're doing the right thing there. In Latinx, it's two point five percent in even this very small group. Meaning we have a lot of cases in Latinx and you can see what the testing positivity is in other groups. We have a lot of clusters, as we've talked about. Among the first three eighty cases, there were twenty three multi household clusters. Six associated with work sites or work related events. Four associated with family events like funerals or birthday parties. And the remaining thirteen are very complex with extensive overlap between household work and extended family. This just tells us that the virus is easily transmitted from person to person with close contact. Clusters do range in size from two cases to thirty two cases with an average of nine. The largest cluster did have thirty two cases, eighty three contacts, seven households and led to five work site investigations. The sector of employment of our cases. In residents who are adults, you can see. That agriculture and farm work is represented most sixteen percent, fourteen percent unemployed, thirteen percent service and sales. And this probably has to do with the work sites and we had opened up. As you know, retail businesses for curbside and pickup as well as recently for in store. And this might reflect some of that opening. Certainly with agriculture and farm work, these folks have always worked, which is why they. Are highly represented. Healthcare has dropped to nine percent. Initially, we saw a lot of healthcare workers. Now that's tapering off as our mitigation measures are in place and screening of employees is in place. We have cases in the manufacturing, professional managerial, and you can see the other sectors. Outbreaks by industry, we have culture clusters of illness or extensive work site investigation in all these areas. Agriculture, farm work, service, sales, healthcare, manufacturing, construction, landscaping, public safety. Sanitation, public works, cleaning, janitorial, environmental services and food and beverage production. So we, these are all the places where our disease control team is very busy trying to do extensive work site investigations at this time. I'm going to move some balance measures. Since shelter in place was implemented in March, we had a trend of heightened overdose deaths in March and April. That it fell below the average levels in May, twenty twenty. Basically, we're comparing the three year average for two thousand seventeen to nineteen to now. And that's the comparison. It's the the results that we're projecting in overdoses and suicide deaths. So we're actually. Have now moved to being below the previous two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen. For these numbers. The mental health warm line, which I know that was of interest last week. Has seen a lot of use and I'm really glad to say it's a service that we've been providing since. April twenty sixth and even recently, we've seen a big. Uptick on certain days with a lot of calls to warm line where people can call in and get. One on one counseling in English and in Spanish. The total calls have been five hundred and two since its inception. So I think it's a really good service and it's been providing. A much needed service for the community. Why are the, what are the reasons for the calls? They're sort of all over the place, but. You can see the breakdown here of anxiety, depression, loneliness, overwhelm. You know, problems with family members, partners, suicidal thoughts, other that we've been tracking. Overall, age of callers is largely in the over sixty group. There's quite a bit of. Of calls half, over half in this group, and then the majority of the others in the twenty five to fifty nine year old age group. And less so in younger people. And then, of course, certain numbers of people that don't respond and it's unknown. Overwhelmingly, it's people who speak English, ninety three percent, but seven percent Spanish speaking. And referrals have been provided by the warm line to mental health professionals for ongoing care. And other categories. And then, as you can see here, substance abuse, food. Et cetera. Child abuse and neglect allegations are important to look at because kids are largely now sheltering in place with families. And a lot of referrals are made in schools and other places where kids go. And so those definitely largely dropped off. As a result, probably shelter in place because kids weren't in places where. The referrals could be made. So we have seen definitely a decrease in these referrals since that timeframe. And by abuse type, physical abuse has dropped off quite a bit. In other words, the allegations of physical abuse and of neglect. So based on all the stuff that I have presented, the fact that we have been relatively. Stable in our metrics over the past week and a half. We will, starting tomorrow, begin with opening of wine, well. Letting wineries, breweries, distilleries be permitted to serve. For our tasting rooms not paired with food. And that aligns with the governor's order, which will be again permitted as of tomorrow per the governor. And we now are working with the Economic Development Board to allow. Sorry, the businesses here. Are listed casinos and card rooms, film, television, music production, pro sports without live audience, schools, day camps, campgrounds. Hotels for tourism, that would include the short term rentals. Bars, gyms, fitness centers, movie theaters and family entertainment centers, zoos and museums. These are the things that were covered in the governor's last. Reopening strategy that was announced on Monday, I believe it was. And we will follow suit by next Friday, June nineteenth. In compliance with the state guidance and mitigation measures, if our cases and all of our mitigation factors. Look good and remain stable without any major increases in our red flags. Will plan to open as of Friday, June nineteenth. And why June nineteenth and not June twentieth Saturday? Because we feel like it's reasonable to allow our. Tourism industry. To move forward on Friday so that they can take advantage of the weekend if we are going to open. For people to come. And then use their services on a Friday night rather than opening on Saturday, which would limit their ability to open for the weekend. We're doing that as a. You know, a measure to help. Boost their ability to open. Early, but in the future, we'll still use the two week metric for opening based on our mitigation. Strategy that we, the risk based strategy we've been using all along. But in this instance, it will be Friday that we're looking at to reopen. If everything stays well. So I'm hoping that's the case and I'm happy to take any questions on any of the stuff that I presented. Thank you very much.
We've gotten a lot of comments about yesterday's conversation or Tuesday maybe about the board and about your position and all these other things. I, for one, I know the board was very clear and while we continue to try and figure out. How we staff departments, how we set up reporting structures and all these things. I, you weren't on that call with us, but I heard a resounding round of support for the work. You have become somebody who unfortunately, it's it's sometimes it's. It's it's you're either a hero or a villain and that is just dead wrong and. I just want to stress that your authority is really our authority as a team. As the board of supervisors and as you and we rise and fall together. And so I want to make sure the public knows that, you know, and I know my colleagues have expressed this as well, but with you on the call. Is an extreme amount of respect. What you just went through in the presentation. Showed exactly that you have the experience, you have the value set and the judgment to do this job in the right way. As we've gone through the last three months. You know, it's it's an imperfect relentless process of trying to figure out how to do this stuff. And I appreciate the 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 focus on now we are in a new, we're in a new world, right? You said it, I think to us is that after we get through this next round of openings, there's not much left. Outside of really kind of close contact, you know, massage nails. Eyelashes and then on the other side, really big, big congregation kind of stuff. Right? That's that the governor's been holding off. There's some things that are coming with the next round. They're gonna. They said they're going to come out with guidelines for kids sporting events, you know, for the summertime. And some other things, but but this is the big deal. So now we are going into this new. Our first three months flattening the curve now from here until there's a vaccine. Living with COVID and managing this and your epidemiological background is showing right now. So I really would just want to say I appreciate that. Couple, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
A couple of things, so. From your best guess, how much COVID is out there that is undiagnosed in our community? I hate to ask you supposition, but I do think it's fair from what you.
I think it's a good question. I think because we've had such a cautious approach. And looked at the data and and you know. It's we've opened, but we've looked very closely at what's happening as we move forward. And I think because we had the advantage of putting our shelter in place into effect so so early. Thank thankful to the counties that that showed us what could happen if we didn't. I don't think we have a lot of community transmission in Sonoma County. Again, that are not. That puts us just two behind Imperial or one behind Imperial. Is due to us at in the public health department going out there and doing massive testing in higher populations. That's you saw the test activity rate in contacts. It's eighteen percent. Eighteen percent of contacts are turning out to be positive. That's the transmission.
And I want to thank you for bringing contact investigations to us far before it was a conversation at this with the state providing through the partnership of use. UCSF and UCLA and all these folks. It shows. The epidemiology that you brought to the table, really that that disease focus. So. With that, I also appreciate that you brought up the issue of even though we have some red numbers, it's very difficult when you have. Low, you talk about R not, but we talk about N, which is the actual numbers. And then the numerators and denominators, you know, we could have. A number on a Monday that shows eight percent. We could have a number on Friday that shows a sixty seven percent. We could have a number the next Monday that drops to fifteen percent because of. If you're doing the percentages based on low, low overall numbers, it's a difficult situation. Is that right?
Exactly. And that's why the case eight per hundred thousand is probably one of the best things for us to follow. In our county, those hospitalization numbers, as you said, they can fluctuate widely because the number are so low. If you add like two hospitalizations, you're up, you know, five percent. So I I agree with you a hundred percent on that. And again, as we move forward, one red flag isn't going to make any big difference. We're going to see a trend of numerous red flags. That then would spark a discussion amongst us all as to what, how to move forward.
Antibody testing that we have increased or or opened up as the county. There's also private companies that are purchasing that equipment and doing antibody testing. I've heard some that when California, the governor's task force on testing on a call that I was on. Stated that they want to use antibody testing to understand COVID better in our communities, but there are, they are. At about a month ago, they were more concerned with false negatives, false positives and other things like that. In the press release that we released through you all. It talked about a very high degree of confidence in those antibody tests going forward. Can you talk to that and how we should, how we should message and talk about antibody testing here in Sonoma County?
Yeah, we chose a test. It's a DiaS Orin test. You can go to the CDC website and check it out. It has some of the best numbers in terms of characteristics. Our lab director. In other words, the ability to really detect if somebody has had COVID antibodies. The ability to detect that is like ninety seven point six percent. If somebody really didn't have COVID antibodies, the ability to show that they didn't is ninety nine point three percent. So that's just a way of saying it's a good, it's a really good test. Said that when the percentage of people in the population who have it is super low, like less than one percent. It still leads to false negatives and positives. That's why we're using the antibody test in high risk groups. That's why we're starting. With the cases and contacts, the first responders and certain health. Situate workers that were, they had cases in their facility, that sort of thing. And we would not move to the community until we, unless we find a really high percentage in those groups because it's not worth it. If half of the results are false, negative or positive, why would you even do the test in a group? So I, that's the. So the message is we're doing the antibody testing in these. Groups where we either know they've had COVID or that they're highly likely to have. To better understand how many people got COVID in those high risk groups that we never knew about. And if we find, say, thirty percent of our first responders actually have antibodies. Then we're thinking, wow, then more people in the community could have gotten infected and we had no idea. We better test more people. In the community to find out what the prevalence is. If we find that less than, you know, two percent of our first responders actually got infected. Then it's not a big issue. And what, as I was saying before, maybe we really don't need to go to the community and look at community transmission in that way. So we will definitely get, anybody who's positive for an antibody test, we'll talk to them. And let them know how to interpret that. By the way, you know, the blood bank has started routinely testing. Blood donors for COVID antibodies. And the other, we could use this. If we have people who have antibodies, especially our cases, they could be conalecent plasma donors. As a treatment strategy for our really sick COVID people in the hospital in the future. That's another way in which we could use this testing.
In the past, you've stated that this idea of herd immunity. Sixty percent plus of our population having contracted COVID at some time. That would take years to develop. Is that, is that correct?
If you just let the vaccine spread, I mean, sorry, the virus spread without any mitigation. Yeah, it would take several years to really get to sixty percent of the population being infected. That would, you know. Probably take a while and that it would be sixty percent before we feel like we have herd immunity. That's why a vaccine is the the next best thing for us.
And leads to my next question, which is where, where do you, it seems like every time we hear about a vaccine. For the last three months, it's a year to eighteen months away. And then next month, the next month, it's a year to eighteen months away. I I feel like we can't just have this blind faith. Or oft hope that a corporate pharma company is going to come and save us from ourselves, that we have to learn to live with COVID. And and adapt our activities as if it's not, but interested in your thoughts on that. But then also, what do you hear as an epidemiologist on vaccine development?
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. If we get really lucky, something might come in place before that year. Mark that we're talking about. There is a company, Moderna, who's put forth a vaccine candidate that looks. Good in preliminary. Lab based kind of testing that's been done so far. But you know, there's numerous tests to ensuring. Effective vaccine. It's good that some of the previous efforts for coronavirus vaccines are. In the efforts towards the vaccine for this coronavirus, but there's still a lot of unknown. And it remains to be seen whether, like influenza, this virus will mutate. Every year requiring a new vaccine. I hope that's something. But yes, right now we need to focus on opening and living with COVID and following all the mitigation. Measures since we don't have a vaccine yet.
Is it fair to say that under current assessments, we're not going to have a vaccine and all be saved from this before the end of the year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Not before the end of the year.
There you go. That's what I want. I think it's important that we start to have to get our community back to the reality of. This messaging that living with COVID is not going to be a blink of an eye. These frustrations that are in our community, we have to. Learn our own form of resilience from it. And so. And so, um, get people looking up over the horizon. We're in, uh, we're in these, uh, tunnel vision, sitting in the trench all the time, every day. Oh, are we a week behind the governor on this announcement? Are we three days behind this, but we're going to be here for a while. Um, talk about, if you can, about therapeutics, um, or about treatments. Um, you had mentioned to us, one of your concerns was this, uh, drug called Reviserol. I think it was mentioned that was.
Remdesivir.
Uh, thank you.
Remdesivir, yeah.
Um, well, talk to me about Remdesivir.
Verazone is in red wine, I think.
There you go.
Just for the record, I think it's in great. Yeah, you know, um, Remdesivir and the clinical trials, uh, if you look at really sick people who need oxygen, you're going, you know, to the ICU bound kind of person, there was a thirty percent improvement in mortality, in death, in other words, in people who were given Remdesivir. The numbers are still really low, but it's really nice to have a drug that probably doesn't have that many side effects that people can be given. So we've used it in, uh, many patients here already in Sonoma County through Sutter, Memorial and Kaiser hospitals, and we do have enough now for treating an additional two patients or so. So we're in a good place in terms of having at least some backup drug. And the state is releasing the drug to counties based on how much they've used. For the last two weeks, how many patients did Sonoma County put on the drug? And based on that, they give us an allocation. So I think we're okay there because we have, like I said, enough courses, treatment courses. That's us, I think it's, uh, six doses per patient. Actually, no, eleven doses per patient. Um, I think we have enough now for two courses. So we're okay there with the understanding that some of our counties next to us that are smaller, we've been giving allocate, our allocation to them if they need it. So, um, therapeutics aren't really the other good.
Is this for people who are truly, um, were worried about them losing?
Oh, yeah. I mean, these are people who, mm-hmm, who get admitted and they look like they're going to not do well immediately. Going, they require lots of oxygen and they're going south. And a lot of them are younger people that, you know, aren't in the ICU yet, but might end up that way. So we go ahead and release the drug. It shows, studies show that if you give the drug with sooner, uh, within seventy-two hours of symptoms, if, there's a much better chance of improvement.
So how does that work though? I mean, if you have two courses, um, does that mean, is that two patients?
Yeah.
So, uh, do you work with the, like, the, do you control that drug? That, and then get it to a hospital that needs it, or do they have their own supply as well?
Well, so some of them have, like Memorial has supply because they're doing a sort of a study. You know, so they have nine courses that they can use.
Okay.
Specifically for patients who are ventilated. Now that's different. Now what we do is we have a, um, small group of the physicians, uh, the ID docs in the three hospitals and me and the Mohawk team that work together in deciding, you know, uh, who, the allocation of the drug. But I hope we don't get into a situation where we have more patients than we have drugs for. If we do, of course, we'll be knocking on the door at the state of California saying, give us more drug right away.
Okay, I do, I'm going to round up. I'd have just a few more, but I, there, I, I appreciate this. This is very good for, uh, information and clarity. Um, those, uh, the unfortunate, uh, community members that have passed away, the four individuals, um, can you tell me, um, with respecting their privacy, um, that they, because we focused on the percentage of people in those, uh, uh, that were hospitalized, ICU with underlying conditions. Um, can you talk in general with respecting their privacy about the age and underlying conditions of those four individuals?
Yes, I'll just confirm they're all elderly, over age five. And, um, they all had underlying conditions, I think diabetes, dialysis, heart disease and underlying lung disease. So those are the underlying conditions for these folks. Um, I actually couldn't tell you geographically because I didn't know geographically where people were. But, um, you know, really our heart goes out. The families that had to suffer with this and I, uh, very, um, moving forward, I just really want to avoid kinds of situations of deaths and hospitalizations. And, and that's really, and if you look at the bigger picture, we're trying our best to protect these vulnerable populations. And that's why we're doing everything we're doing is to try to prevent vulnerable populations, people with underlying conditions and really bad outcomes.
Well, at my last check and Supervisor Zane and everyone else has talked about this, but forty percent of the deaths in California as of a couple of weeks ago were in elder care facilities. Um, and, uh, you look at hotspots, um, uh, of deaths like in Tulare County and others. And, um, uh, it's, it's, it's really catastrophic, um, what you see in those areas. Um, which goes to, uh, the point about rights and responsibilities. Uh, uh, we talk about, uh, the masking, the, um, I was at a shop yesterday and I asked, uh, the individual working at the front. Um, it was at just a, a boat parts shop. And I said, I was picking up a part and he said, we've been open for two weeks. I said, how you doing? What, how's it really going? He said, we've been working for two weeks, but he says it's stressful and having to get into a lot of fights with people who want to come in here without masks and want to exercise their rights by getting into an argument with me. And he said, uh, you know, I have, I, I just keep telling him, it's like, I take care of my grandma. I'd like to be able to see her. And, you know, you're, I think we've got to remind people that, um, that their rights can infringe upon other people's rights. Uh, so, uh, there's a responsibility with, with any rights that come. Um, at the same time, I guess, uh, just kind of rounding this out, um, I, I, we talked about, uh, Remdesivir, but, uh, is, is, is Remdesivir in the grouping of what is called therapeutics? And is that, what else is being out there? I, I actually am not that interested in talking about chloroquine. I took it for anti-malaria in the Peace Corps and it, uh, uh, it was, it's pretty destructive stuff. Um, but, uh, what, what do you see out there for other therapeutics? Because if a vaccine isn't developed quickly, the other side of it is, is that can the therapeutics get enough to where we don't have, we might have infection rates, but we might not have the same concerns about, uh, um, uh, death, um, and intubation and other things.
Yes, so Remdesivir isn't therapeutics, it's a treatment. Vaccine would be also considered a therapeutic because it's a preventative treatment. Uh, we are looking, there are a few antiretroviral drugs that we use for, against HIV that have been looked at for this virus that, um, some, some of which are now in some trials to see if they're effective or not. Agree with you a hundred percent. Hydroxychloroquine is a terrible drug in terms of side effects. And in fact, the recent data suggests that it's actually worse if you take it than better and leads to, it could lead to, you know, sudden death from cardiac death and things like that. So got to be really careful with, uh, using drugs until they're proven to be effective. And so we'll, uh, have more updates on that. Right now, nothing more in terms of, these kind of viruses are really hard to treat. As you know, there is no treatment really for the common cold, you know? That's a corona, it's, it's a hard virus to actually, uh, develop.
Well put, well put, well put. No treatment for the common cold. Thousands of years in, all the science behind it. So, um, um, as I mentioned before, it looks like what we're hearing out of the state is, is that kid sports, nail massage, other close contact stuff is going to come out next. Unless we have crazy surges, we're going to be, uh, um, opening into the hotels and, uh, gyms and fitness centers and other things like that in, um, um, a, a week from tomorrow. Um, and that, as you said, is we're going to be strategically going after spikes, uh, around the county and living with COVID. So, uh, uh, final thing I want to say is, is that kind of what I started with, is that, um, everybody who I've heard that has, uh, really come into sharp contrast on, um, in our, uh, public comments and some of the other things, um, uh, from what we've seen with polls and other things is that that doesn't represent really the silent majority. Um, I've seen polling that shows that more than sixty, sixty-five percent of folks think that we're doing, um, as good enough job, which means that we're doing the best we can. Um, those folks that are very loud, I've found that, um, at least by my back of the envelope is at least seventy-five percent plus of those individuals start their comments with, I believe, or I think. And, um, and it shows that we're in a very, uh, difficult situation where people expect the worst out of government, but, uh, excuse me, they expect the most, but they also, uh, don't have trust. Um, and so I appreciate that you, uh, bring this data to the table. Um, that expertise, this epidemiological expertise that our, our previous health officers did not have is, uh, uh, I think you were preparing your whole life for, um, this moment with us. And, um, and I appreciate you. Thank you.